Okay, it's a little tight. George and I. It's me. I almost wrote back and said, "I don't need a smartphone." I don't know. I'd say so. What do you say the same thing? Yeah. This guy's got all the judges.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, do you look official? Do they get staffed? And she has like a penny.
I see hands in the distance. And I want them. Okay. What I'd like to do is call meeting to order. If you please stand, I've asked Councilman Riddick again to meet with a prayer. And then please remain standing for the majority.
Father, we come to you this afternoon thanking you for the blessings you restore upon us as a city. We ask you to let your loving hand go down to those communities that were so ravished by the tournages of last weekend. We thank you for keeping us safe from natural catastrophes. We ask you to bless those families in our community, especially those families who have absolutely none. We ask you to give us the ability to do this job in a fair and just manner. These are all the blessings we ask of our people.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation on your behalf. In this visible, representative, justice, law.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Mr. Riddick.
Uh, Mr. Clerk, I'm gonna say present and also you do a good setup outside of City Hall as well. And you do a great job.
Dr. Whibley.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Wynn.
Mayor.
Mr. Frame.
Here. Um, I believe we're gonna be joined by the Vice Mayor shortly and we'll take, um, we'll mark him present when he arrives.
Yes, sir.
Um, Councilman Protogiro could not be here, so motion is to excuse Councilman Protogiro.
Mr. Riddick.
Yes.
Dr. Whibley.
Yes.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Wynn.
Yes.
Mr. Frame.
Yes. Um, why don't we move to, um, what about the minutes bracket? They'll be at the formal meeting next time.
Yes, sir. Okay, alright.
Good evening, afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for joining us. Um, we're here at Waterside. We're gonna, City Council's got some business that we're gonna conduct before we begin the five o'clock presentations. Um, the procedure which we're gonna follow today is we have asked the Norfolk Recreation and Art Rinkers and these open spaces, parks, and open spaces.
Whoever they are.
This great panel here to join us and we're gonna have about an hour and a half discussion with them. So, we're gonna go from 3:30 to just about 5:00. Um, and then at 5:00 or hopefully just before that, we'll be great for just a couple of minutes and then allow the two presenters who, uh, the manager has informed that they will, informed us they will be here to make the two presentations on the Waterside proposals. We hope to begin that right at 5:00. We've already advertised that for 5:00 and so I think everybody should be ready and good to go at that moment. Um, the other thing I'd like to comment on is that we are not gonna take comments or questions from the public today. There will be an opportunity for that later after the manager makes his recommendation where the public can make comments about, um, the city manager's presentation. The purpose of this afternoon's exercise is to, for the City Council to hear at the same time the public hears, uh, the presentations from the two finalists. So, but before we get there, we are glad to be here, um, with our commission and thank you for joining us here today. Looks like we have a pretty full house. Um, and Michael, uh, the Chair is, Mr. O'Hearn is gonna make a presentation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does this suit you okay? I mean, the...
This is fine.
Okay.
I think you can change it, Michael.
And Mr. Smigle is not here. Is he, I think he's gonna join us?
Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Mayor Frame and Councilmembers, thanks for having us here today and we appreciate this opportunity to, uh, to brag about...
Were you gonna comment on the, on Judge Bonnie?
I'm getting to that.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, sir. Thanks for the prompt. And Bart, by the time I finish, you'll know who we are. Okay, um... Okay, let me introduce the commissioners that are here. My assistant Chair here is Senator George Anderson. We have Paul Valance, Courtney Doyle, Charlotte Bling, is that Charlotte? And our new addition, Deb Rock, who, uh, we just, I just met her for the first time today. And so I'd like to welcome her aboard. Uh, we've got several others that did not, that could not make it. Don Masaccio could not make it. Chuck Melker, who's also one of our new additions. Chuck is retired from the Navy, he was going through the throes of that. And he also went to the Naval Academy. And the Commodus Bay, oh, now we've got two people on the commission that are Naval Academy grads. And I said, "Well, things could be worse if we had two people on council that have been in mine." I also want to recognize Daryl Crittenden, the director of this wonderful art show, Diver. We've also got Art Thatcher here. And I think Dean Walz is here as well. So, if you'll stand up, if you recognize them. I do wanna comment, I've been on the commission for five years. When I first started here, the Chair was Judge Bonnie. And followed by Paul Valance and followed by me. But I, we just had the misfortune of losing Judge Bonnie and I do wanna say to everyone here that he was a fantastic leader, person who loved Norfolk, loved the commission, and so loved Darrell Crittenden that as long as I... Judge Bonnie grew up here, so he's been here all his life, but he had Darrell as a pole bearer. So, that speaks highly of the relationship that Darrell established with Judge Bonnie. And for all family members that may be tuning in on this, I'd just like everyone to know that though he is physically absent, his presence will be with us for a long time to come. As I sat down, I sat looking at what I wanted to talk about today. I looked at the impact of, of what we do with recreation parks and open space and the vast majority of, of, uh, people that are influenced by it. And I, uh, there's a thing called the, uh, I remember going through an organizational development program where they talked about the Wheel of Life. And they talked about spokes in the Wheel of Life. And they include intellectual, social, cultural, spiritual, physical. And I feel very strongly that this department impacts the public, the citizenry of this city and more of these spokes of the Wheel of Life than any other department. And that we have this opportunity to do individual as well as team building, which puts all of us in a very, very responsible position to move forward. Uh, most of this brief that follows is going to be touting the success story of this department and also thanking council and the taxpayers for supporting it. But I would like to just share with you, everyone knows about Good Times. And, yeah, I get it every month and I go through it, but I did it today before I came down. And I started looking at the phenomenal amount of features and programs that we have in this city. I mean, this is a staggering document if you read it cover to cover. And I think most people, and I don't slate them, if they wanna take a course in ballet, we'll look up the dance section and find out the ballet classes. But if you look across the spectrum of programs that they have here, we build individuals, we build communities, we build teams. We build, if somebody wants to take up an individual sport, they could take a tennis lesson. If they wanna learn how to dance, they could take a multiple, multiple dance lessons. Learn how to play an instrument, learn how to throw a pot, I think that's the expression, right? Or make jewelry, they can do that. We've, we've, we have, we impact senior citizens, we impact, there's teams for adults. So, we impact the entire spectrum of our citizenry at all levels and all ages. And it is really a remarkable thing to cut, to look at. Now, I know that I sound very Pollyanna-esque here, but it just made me realize how much we do. And none of this would be possible without the support that we've had from council and it has been great support. Um, I do wanna say one thing, I wanna create a metaphor or analogy, I never knew the difference between the two. Winston Churchill once said that the Battle of Britain was won on the playing fields of Eaton. Well, let me just take that and turn it around and say, this city of Norfolk has come a long way and is really becoming a greater city all the time. But we are going to keep moving forward and a lot of this is gonna have to do with, with our emphasis, with this department. But I will submit that our future, our future growth and development and genius will come from the playing fields of the rec center, the rec department. They'll come from the hardwood courts, they'll come from the pools, and they'll come from the, the community centers. And that's what we're doing. We are building community and we're building future with this, uh, with this organization. And I'm very happy about is, I always feel strongly that if you're not moving forward, you're going backwards. And there are two documents that I will talk about a little bit more la- later that I, that give me assurance or reassurance that we're gonna continue to move forward. And that's the JUA, Joint Use Agreement between us and the school system and the Recreation Master Plan that I believe will be presented one more time to council on the 27th. Both of those documents, I, I view as source documents to launch us from this high launching pad that we already have to higher levels. So far, have I read anything to you, Terry? Okay, uh, we had a very great event last fall. We hosted the Virginia Recreation and Parks Society. Uh, first time in 26 years that we hosted one. And I think the reason, we had 700 people down here, Councilman Protogiro, Protogiro gave a kickoff speech, it was very moving, very stirring. And at the end of it, he said two things, "Ride the tide before you go home and spend all your per diem." Like I said, 700 people, he had their wives and all that. Now, I will say this about, he's Greek, right? So, I'm sure they obey him. I've been married to him for 37 years and when a Greek tells you something, you normally do it. I've experienced so... Okay, and I, I wanna thank Darrell for bringing us down here. Um, one of the things that was really impressive for me is we all tend to, uh, we stay within the lifelines as far as our, the way we look at things. And we tend to get a little insular, so, and we, there's a bias in most people to go to the negative. One little thing goes wrong, the 10 good things are forgotten about. But this conference was great. I did a kickoff and a presentation so people knew who I, I was. And so, the next day when I went to the workshops and I went, uh, to the exhibits and I had a lot of people come up to me unsolicited. These were directors from other, Darrell's peers from other cities and they said, you know, "We are, you're the best kept secret in Virginia. We've come down here and we found out that you have got a dynamic building program that's ongoing in spite of the challenging economy. And, you know, we're not doing anything. We, we've run up all stop and you're moving forward." So, that was good to hear and I really wanted to share that with you. We've got an award for Lambert's Point, Best Facility. And Darrell Crittenden was awarded Presidential Plaque. He's, he's only been, in the history of the VRPS, he's the second president to hold a term for two years. So, congratulations to Darrell. He's, uh, he's getting the awards. He's getting the, the awards and bringing in the money to the city, which is a good thing. So, just to, and this is what I'm saying, that I, I look at with, uh, when you sit back and, and get this opportunity, it, it gives you an, an opportunity to get the whole picture. And I'm not comparing myself to Paul Frame or what he does every year, but going to that State of the City address, you come away feeling good. Because you know a little piece here, you know a little piece there, and it all sets all pulled together. Well, this, I'm trying to do that with, with this brief today, to realize how much we've got going on. I start out with Good Times and now take a look at, at this building program that you're all very aware of. And Norview Community Center, staggeringly beautiful, followed up by Lambert's Point. And we've got, we're gonna be building a Southside Aquatic Center, an Ingleside Gym, a Therapeutic Center, I think they've just started expanding that, is that correct, Darrell? Cavalry Cemetery Office Building, Forest Lawn. In addition to that, look at all the park work we've done. We've improved parks, I mean, Broad Park is, is, excuse me, Roland Park is a good example of a community building opportunity here. We, Darrell and his group put in some swings and some slides in a park that I had seen earlier that was really an eyesore in that neighborhood. After they installed that, the neighborhood, which has got a very active civic league, got together and they planted, they bought plants, bushes, trees, et cetera, and they did a major planting on a Saturday. I went over there and pitched in with them and their next goal is to get the wetlands that had joined that. So, that's what this does. You, you, you put a swing in and next thing you know, you got people taking and improving the site, pulling the community together, team building. It doesn't get any better than that. Okay, this is just an overview, just to give you an idea of how do we get, how do we execute all this? We've got, Terry told me not to read anything to her, so I'm very sensitive to this, but look at the number of rec centers that we've got, specialty centers. I mean, this, there is a lot of, of, uh, of buildings and fields and, and just a huge span of control for this department that we have throughout this city. And just like, you know, I am reading this to you. We've been open for 248, 49 days in fiscal year 11 and we had almost a million and a half people coming through the gates. That's an average of 5,483 visitors there. That's pretty good, that's pretty impressive. That goes back to my Wheel of Life. We're touching every one of these people, in some cases, every day. Okay, um, I'm staying positive, but we've all experienced some cutbacks and, uh, we've had a little reduction in, in the, uh, the staffing, we're all aware of that. Uh, thanks for the leadership of Darrell Crittenden and his great Bureau Managers and leadership goes all the way down through that, to the rec centers and the deck plates. They're, they're literally doing more with less. Uh, there's one bullet in here, one-third of fee-based courses that are over capacity that I'll refer to later. But I just picked out a, a typical center and it was Huntersville. And right now, the monthly average of people coming there is higher than last year. And they're operating with two part-time and two full-time, excuse me, two temporary staff members. They can do it, they're doing it, but we've got to be careful, we can't reduce that number. I am concerned a little bit about safety, this, the military would call this an INW, an indicator and a warning. You've got two people there, you've got 200, you've got two staff members there, you've got 200 people, if something goes wrong, how much flexibility do you have? So... They're very busy as well. Uh, we do internments at four, as you all know, and we, uh, we maintain a total of eight cemeteries. Um, we've had, uh, they've been very busy, plus they've gotta maintain the grounds and all that. They've had a small reduction in staff, so they're still doing well. And, uh, we have, this is a big plug for Sheriff Bob McCabe. He gets the, uh, prisoners over there and, uh, whatever they call them, what's the politically correct term?
Work release.
The work release, I'm sorry. I apologize, you can strike that for the record, strike it, but, uh, they've been helping out a lot. As a matter of fact, I was at, I do a lot of wetlands work, went down to Lakewood and cut all those Frank Mities. And we needed a lot of people, they showed up and I tell you, they were hardworking. I gave a big pep talk on how important wetlands were, what they meant to all of us and the bottom line is we can get oysters out of it, something to eat and all that. And these guys couldn't do enough. And, uh, they, they were hard workers and, uh, and I'll do a little anecdote, I saw, after I saw these guys for a while, the guy that was, their guard was a retired chief and whoever and started talking, I said, "Chief, you know, the difference between these guys and me is they got caught and I didn't. These guys are good guys, they helped out a lot." So, anyways. Okay, uh, in the last, I think, two years, we have picked up a genealogist, this Bobby Nelson. And she's done a lot of work where people go over there and find out where, where ancestors are buried and, and she's been very busy with that. But they've also developed a great partnership with the Friends of Norfolk Historical Society. And, uh, this group, the President is Tim Bonney, I think the Vice President is, uh, Duran Berkeley have done a lot. Their goal is to preserve these cemeteries. I mean, these cemeteries are filled with artwork that is staggering. I, I went on a two-and-a-half hour tour of Elmwood with Tim Bonney and I was absolutely amazed at, first of all, his encyclopedic memory, but just the, the history that he talked about, the, uh, the artwork and the monuments and, and it was really awesome from the standpoint that, you know, I really didn't know this. But now it makes me more committed to helping the Friends of Norfolk Historical Society because we can't afford to maintain these, these monuments. But this is preserving our past and our heritage. There is, there are headstones of that from people from the Revolutionary War. So, we've gotta stay on top of this. Now, I do wanna bring up one issue and I'm gonna clarify. We had this issue that came up a while back about having like wine and cheese at some of these events. And I will share this with you, that I brought it up to council because I was in favor of it. I had just been back in Green Bay, I've got a brother that lives there, Green Bay, Wisconsin. And his, my brother's wife had a friend that's very active with the cemeteries. They've got like the equivalent of the Friends of Norfolk Historical Society and they do, they have alcohol at, at their, at their gatherings and they're raising a ton of money and they're, they're doing a lot of preservation. So, I came back with that idea and I know it seems, and I apologize, and I pushed hard on this. I apologize if it seemed disrespectful. But my motivation was, I think it's more disrespectful to not do anything with the monuments. And so, that was worth, you know, I was part of the, the group that started pushing that up. And I understand that it might be cultural and it might be regional, but that was the motivation. The cultural part is our motivation, okay? So, and then of course, you know what Wisconsin's like. Okay, urban forestry. They've had, they've probably had one of the bigger cuts, go for 120, 169 people, 269 people. Um, but they are noble warriors. They are striving mightily to stay in a 10-day mowing cycle. And in FYI, Virginia Beach is on a 14-day. So, they're working hard. Now, where's the backlog? It's on tree trimming. So, something's gotta give. So, that's the message on that one. And also, you've got 180,000 trees and Mayor Frame wants, what, 200,000 by the end of next year? So, anyways, we'll get there. I'm, I'm very impressed with what's going on with, uh, youth outreach here. And, uh, the, uh, Parks Recreation Spaces partnered with Department, partnered with the Department of Communications and they've really expanded on this youth outreach. Um, their youth council was just one, a single one, now it's going to two. And that's for grades nine to 12 and middle school seven to eight. And they've got five neighborhood service centers and each service center has a, uh, let me just see, I'm gonna read this. Neighborhood Development Specialist, that's aside from the Department of Communications. So, they have, uh, this partnership as far as youth outreach is starting to work. I'll show you some of the, uh, the products of it. And this goes right along with what we're trying to do here for building the city, building individuals, helping our youth and, uh, moving forward. Okay, we got After the Belt Program, if there's any hard questions on this, I've got Darrell here. Um, the Third Quarterly Youth Tech Fest, they had like 300 students attended that. And they had technology exhibits, they had classes and all that. And that's a good thing, you know, this country's not producing as many engineers as they need to. Let's see. And that PHAT Promoting Healthy Active Teams Conference takes place at Booker T. at the 31st of March. And the bottom bullet is very significant. The Mentor Program with ODU and Norfolk State University and Norview. They come in and mentor these kids after they get out of school. I think this should be the model for the rec centers. I know the staffing isn't there right now, but I think we need to start moving that way. I really believe that we have a lot of opportunities through our rec centers to help these kids with their grades. I also am concerned about the achievement gap we have, we wanna go after that. And I think this is a good start and this is a good model. And all these programs, all these programs will contribute to that.
The programs that you listed there, are any of those fee-based programs or are all of those open to, are any of those programs fee-based programs or all of those just open to the public if they're, just because of their citizenry?
Captain Bell is actually a non-fee-based program. The Youth Quarterly Tech Fest is free to the public. Norfolk Youth Council, there are no fees. Youth Forum, no fees. Youth in Government Day, no fees. Fat Conference, no fees. We're sponsored for that, that's actually provided through Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Summer Camps, we have non-fee for some of our summer camps. Norfolk Emerging Leaders Program, no fees. And the Mentor Program, ODU and Norfolk State, no fees as well.
Great, thank you.
Darrell, you might have to stay up here if there's any more questions. No, I'm not kidding. Okay, Joint Use Agreement. We've been working on this for about three and a half years, myself and my Vice Chair, George Curtis. We're getting there, I think it's in the final signature chain. Now, what is, what does this mean? Well, it means that we're gonna link up with the schools. Now, uh, the history behind this is we never had one. I bet, and, and we probably did okay without it. I'm not saying anything negative, but people were staggered when they came in for VRPS and we didn't have one from other cities. These are the ones that would tell us how great we are, okay? So, just, um, what happened, this is my, for whatever reason, we didn't have it, but we also had another concept that I think led to unexpected consequences and that's the idea of site-based management. Each of the principal is their own commanding officer. And they, they set their policies, they set the procedures, and they're responsible for their budget. So, and, and, you know, as being a retired Navy captain with three commands, I like that approach. But here's the unforeseen consequence, everyone that dealt with the rec center in their area or whatever had a different way of doing business. Some would charge, some wouldn't, some would charge a lot more than others. And so, we really couldn't come up with a, with a way, a methodology of, of scheduling in advance because we didn't know if the principal changed, they would change. So, this Joint Use Agreement should take care of that. And I really feel it's important to take and share all these resources because you take a look at the Venn diagrams that, of Parks Recreation and Space and youth. We share youth, they're just as much ours, maybe not quite as much, as the school system. We're gonna join together and we're gonna look for opportunities to move forward with this. And the other one is the Master Plan that was briefed the other day, I won't go over this too much, it just, here's how I look at it. It needs to be signed and it also needs to become a document for planning, programming, and budgeting or a development of an acquisition strategy, whichever terminology you wanna use. This is a, uh, program, that's a 20-year program. It reflects, it was about almost two years to develop it. They solicited a lot of inputs, it's the voice of the people. I think we need to look at this, use it, and, uh, you know, I'm not one to recommend, but I would recommend some sort of a committee that stays on top of this. And we have a good, you know, five-year plan, plan of action and milestone, and we take a look at how we're gonna budget and how we're gonna move forward. But here's the unforeseen consequence. Everyone that dealt with the rec center in their area or whatever had a different way of doing business. Some would charge, some wouldn't. Some would charge a lot more than others. And so we really couldn't come up with a way, a methodology of scheduling in advance because we didn't know if the principal changed, they would change. So this joint use agreement should take care of that. And I really feel it's important to take and share all these resources. Because you take a look at the Venn diagrams of Parks Recreation Space and youth, we share youth. They're just as much ours, maybe not quite as much, as the school system. We're going to join together and we're going to look for opportunities to move forward with this. And the other one is the master plan that was briefed the other day. I won't go over this too much. It's just, here's how I look at it. It needs to be signed. And it also needs to become a document for planning, programming, and budgeting, or development of an acquisition strategy, whichever terminology you want to use. This is a program, that's a 20-year program. It reflects, it was about almost two years to develop it. They solicited a lot of inputs. It's the voice of the people. I think we need to look at this, use it, and, you know, I'm not one to recommend, but I would recommend some sort of a committee that stays on top of this. And we have a good, you know, five-year plan, plan of action and milestone. And we take a look at how we're going to budget and how we're going to move forward based on this master plan. It needs to be a living document. I don't want, I don't want to sound negative, but I don't want to see it get signed and it sit in a drawer somewhere. That's, that's it. Okay, highlights and accomplishments. Coach Peak over at Broad Park was a top candidate to be selected for the boxing team for the Olympics. I'm sure you all knew that. I don't know if that's been finalized yet. We were hoping by now we would know, but that's a first. That'd be a first for Norfolk. She runs a great program over there. All right. And the rest of this is all good stuff. And you can read it. But it's just another, it's more icing on the cake for a department that has been doing great work with great people. Okay. I see you guys looking at your watches. I've only got another about 45 minutes to go. Is that okay? We're going to tell me 15 minutes and get out of there. But anyways, I think I've said this many times, but a good thing said many times does not get diluted. This is a great staff. I mean, Daryl and his staff is great. I've got great commissioners. As a matter of fact, Daryl started to bring the bureau managers into our monthly meetings. And so we're building this team. The team gets stronger and we're moving forward. And I've been, thank you for appointing me to this commission. I mean, it's been a delightful five-year run. The next two bullets, I would like you to pay close attention to, particularly the city manager. Our annual budget is 15.3 million. Last year, we turned in 1.3. So you got back 1.3 million on a 15.3 million investment. That's 8%. Now, working, you get 8% on your money. Okay? I mean, really, I mean, there's some, okay, there's some rates you can get that have 300% dividend payout, so they're paying 9%, but they're going to collapse in about a month. So I, if you've got, Marcus, I hope you don't mind the familiarity. If you've got a couple of millions sitting around, just, if you want to invest it, go see Daryl. Because you're going to get some of that back. Because that's that bullet I referred to earlier. We're hitting, over one-third of our fee-based programs are at the max. Which means that if we were to get more money, it's a big if, and hire more people, we could bring back more. We could make that return. I really think, and I know that sounds like I'm jesting a bit, but there is a return on investment with this department that needs to be considered when you have discretionary money available. I am a little concerned that the rubber band has been pulled pretty thin right now. It seems like the number of visitors are increasing, our staff has decreased. We've just got to watch it. I know that if you had more, you'd give us more, and I appreciate that. We appreciate that. But we've just got to keep an eye on that. Back to the master plan, JUA. There are huge source documents. At the risk of being repetitive, I will say this, that if we're going to move forward, and I know we are, these two documents are going to help us move forward. I like that partnership. I want to promote that. And we need to explore other opportunities for partnerships. That's it. This has been delightful. Thank you very much. I've appreciated it, enjoyed every minute of it.
Wait a minute. Michael, thank you for that. For Irishman who graduated from the Naval Academy, married a full-blooded Greek, as you did just, you did fine. Would anybody, any other members of the commission like to make any comments? Anything to follow on? Daryl?
I would just like to say real quick, we appreciate your support for the Therapeutic Recreation Center. That has certainly touched a lot of us, touched Judge Bonney. We love that, what they're doing over there. We appreciate y'all's continued support for that.
Yeah, I wish we could do more at the therapeutic center. I mean, I know we've done this remodeling, but it really needs, and I think we're the only community in Hampton Roads that actually has a therapeutic center. We did a survey some years ago. But we really do need a pool, a warm-water pool for folks who could take advantage of that. We actually had that in a budget at one time, that we were going to move the therapeutic center. We actually, at one time, were talking about moving it over to the Wellness Center, but we never got there. So we got sort of overtaken by the recession. But that's something we hope to revisit. Would love to see us revisit someday. Does any member of the council? I have a couple of comments. Can I? Daryl, what is the difference between part-time and temporary? I mean, we had two part-times and we had two temporary folks at Huntersville. I mean, how do you do that? Now, I know that's just one rec center.
Mr. Mayor, part-time employees are those that actually work with us year-round. And we have different classifications. It can be intermittent, or they can be regular part-time. Our temporary are seasonal employees that just work with us throughout the summer.
I get it. Okay. Okay. Well, the other number, and I got that, that seems to me that needs some attention is that, you know, and I know, I mean, the council was part of this. I mean, we understood budget concerns over the last several years. And we voted to try to bring a budget in that was balanced. And because of that, some departments were, you know, asked to downsize. Some actually more than others, it looks like. But to move from 122 to 69, Marcus, I mean, I don't know if you reviewed other departments within the city, how many have taken that sort of, you know, I mean, cut in personnel? I would, I know you're deep into the budget now, and I know, maybe it's unfair because you're here and we don't have other departments here to make that case in front of us. But it seems to me that this department, with all the good that it does, needs some attention as far as, especially as far as the really, Michael called it the rubber band being stretched, but personnel issues are real for these, especially when you have so many folks over there, many children, and I mean, all of those needs. So it seems to me that, I know money's scarce, but if there is a few things that we can do something, I think this is a good place to do it. So, okay. You want to say something? Terry?
Yeah, I actually had a couple of questions. That's okay. First, I'm the one that's to blame because I did ask Mike not to read the PowerPoint. So if you thought he went too fast, that's me. My question, first off, a small point. We had a number of women come to us that were concerned about the fact that they couldn't get credit if they missed a meeting or a scheduled class and they had gotten that credit before. Did we ever get a resolution on that?
Yes, ma'am, we did. We allow one reschedule per fitness class, and it's working out fine.
Okay. Secondly, could you expand a little bit more on where you're hoping to go with this joint use agreement? I mean, I'm thrilled that you all have met with that, have established that. But I know you're going to go with Norview. But where are we going, like, for the summertime when these buildings are empty? What do you envision there?
What I envision is actually looking at those communities and neighborhoods where we don't have recreational facilities or park facilities, that we can open these schools for summer camps, we can open them for after-school programs. And a good example would be like Lafayette Winona, where you have communities like Fairmont Park, who actually are looking for recreational opportunities in the evening. That could be aerobic classes, free-play basketball, it could be GED courses. But people are actually looking for instructional classes to attend in the evening hours.
So the model will be at Norview, is that right?
Well, actually, we start off with Norview with the outdoor track. And that's the first piece of it. But we're, actually, we have different sites we've identified across the city without recreation facilities. And we'd like to pilot a couple of those schools to offer those type of after-school and evening activities.
And do you have a timeline on how quickly we would move ahead with that?
Our budget cycle would determine that.
Dr. Wilton?
Yes.
I guess to that point, it's a bit broader. We're looking at all of our facilities as community assets. So whether it's a school or a library, or even a fire station. So this is just one element of a different way of looking at assets. I think, last time we talked, we discussed even building a school. Couldn't there be some element of a library, a rec center in it that saves us in the long run? So he's really on the, I guess, leading edge of what we're trying to do system-wide.
Well, and then, I would just echo what Paul said. I mean, when Mike said that we had a 1.3 million return on our 15.3, I mean, I think we have a much greater return than that. And that is not in financial, but it's in the health of our cities and our citizens. And it's also the health of a community that people want to live in. And I think everything we can do to try to increase the number of staff and to try to get these centers open seven days a week, I think all of us hear regularly from our citizens that are upset about the fact that our centers are closed when they'd like to use it. And so I'm hopeful that we can maintain that emphasis. Thanks again.
Some time ago, during an informal session, I mentioned the fact that years ago, Parks Recreation used to provide uniforms for football players. Anthony Burford has a problem with our recreation players having to stand on street corners raising money for uniforms. I did not ask at that time what a possible cost would be for us to furnish uniforms. But one thing that I did say is that when we are operating a billion-dollar budget, it seems to me that we should be able to find money to furnish uniforms for our football players. And so I guess that, that's a question I'd like for you to probably bring me an answer back to, you know, what it would cost to furnish uniforms for our football players during the course of a season. Secondly, there had been some talk a few years ago about mausoleums. All of our mausoleums, our public mausoleums, were the ones we have at Forestline Cemetery at full. And the Bureau of Cemeteries had proposals to build some additional mausoleum, one in Calvary, maybe another at Forestline Riverside. And I don't know where that is in the scheme of things, but I do believe that they would be successful endeavors. A lot of individuals now are opting for mausoleum versus earthburg. And I do believe it would be something that would be successful in Norfolk. So I'd like to see that discussion, Marcus, you know, brought back again. And also, Daryl, would you know exactly how much money we have in our perpetual care fund as far as our cemeteries are concerned?
Not off the top of my head, sir, but I can get that answer for you.
Okay, great. And I know in the past, we've been able to use a percentage of that perpetual care fund, or some of the money we have in our cemeteries, towards our budget and things of that nature. So I would like to know how much, well, what fund, whether it comes from perpetual care or whether it comes from our cemetery, or actual ground burial fund, that we're able to take some of that money and put it, you know, in the budget. And then also, Daryl, what's happening as far as baseball is concerned?
Well, actually, we have a couple of things going on. As you know, the improvements we've made for Azalea and Fleet Park. But we still have our departmental league, the RBI program, which fills about 22 to 25 teams each year. The bulk of the games are played at the Fairlon Recreation Center. And that league will be kicking off around the first weekend in April.
But do we have a baseball league like we do for football? Other than RBI?
No, sir. RBI is basically our departmental league.
Well, I think it needs to be expanded. And also, as far as Fleet Park and Azalea, now that Fleet Park, I guess you'd say, I don't know whether those banners are changed or not, but we're investing a lot of money in the renovation of the Azalea football, of the Azalea baseball field. So those two organizations, I believe, need to expand their membership as far as the inner city is concerned. Fleet Park's membership does go over to Berkeley and Camp Estella. But I think with us investing the money that we're investing in it, we should ask them to expand their registration of playing boundaries.
In prior conversations, sir, Fleet Park was amenable to that.
They are?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
I just have one thing. I know we've gotten a lot of publicity lately about the Norfolk Fitness and Wellness Center. And I know it comes back to a budget versus get, we need to get things done. That's been a great success story. We had, I think, one time close to 7,000 members. I understand it's dropped off. I don't think we can afford to let that facility, we need to pay attention to that. I mean, that's a special place in the community, and we've got a lot invested there. Of course, I know it's a budget item, but I think it should be a priority.
Okay.
Just wanted to give the status on the master plan for the park. Is it going to be voted on by council? Or what's going to happen? What's the timeline for the master plan? Is it going to go back out to the public? Or is it done?
We are planning on bringing it the fourth Tuesday in March, correct?
Yes, sir. Okay, so we'll come back before council, and then we'll take a vote on it. Okay.
You're talking about the master plan for the city?
Master plan for the park. No, for the park.
The parks.
Parks master plan.
Councilman Smigle, are you referring to Bay Oaks or to the master?
Want to talk about Bay Oaks? Just talk about it.
The master plan that he's talking about.
The master plan for the parks. Okay.
Okay. Well, it seems like we've had a good discussion. Thanks, Michael. Thanks, Daryl. We're very proud of you guys.
Thank you.
Any questions on the report again? Thank you. Dr. Jefferson?
Yes, I did. I just wanted to expand on what our chair said about Coach Peak, Gloria Peak, who is appointed to be, to serve, the first female to serve on a U.S. boxing team, to coach a U.S. boxing team for the upcoming Olympics. That is major, major news. Behind the scenes, before that came about, Coach Peak has been quietly plugging away, jabbing away, so to speak, at what she's doing there with a great number of youth that frequent that program. And basically, she has had a very good result in their academics. She has a very well-rounded program there, not just boxing. And we have a few young men that have come out silver gloves, which is a big deal as well. I don't think that we pay enough attention to that program. On the back of her prestige, coupled with what the groundwork that she's laid there, we might want to explore the possibility of establishing Norfolk as a regional center, boxing center of excellence.
You know, I think that's a great idea. Not too many years ago, I actually suggested that we build out the bottom floor under Harbor Park, under hits at the park. There is space there. At one point, we really needed an athletic facility for the police department and for our public safety officers. And we were trying to convince Sweet Pea Whitaker and his managers then to, we would put some rings under there to try to bring some kids from everywhere from Young's Park and the United all over the city to learn about boxing. Maybe Coach Peak is just the person to lift this thing. I think we've actually now improved the police facilities a lot over there. But there is space under there that's never been used. We have to clean it up and carpet it and bring some, you know, some things in. I mean, we could, it would be, we'd have to go out and try to get some grants, but it would be worth something. Okay. Well, thank you all for coming. Appreciate all of your time and your effort, supporting you, put up with these folks. We'll start again right at Bay Oak. How much of the property actually park do you know?
It's about half. It's about 17 years.
Is it enough to trigger our ordinance? Is it enough to trigger the ordinance? Is it enough to trigger the ordinance about non-performing uses being rebuilt? Yes.
Yes.
It is.
[inaudible]
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 They have 30 days to appeal.
Okay, well, we can do this later, but if it's more than 50% damage, then, we have an ordinance somewhere, maybe the city attorney can pull it out, that says a non-performing use. All those hotels and motels in Ocean View are non-performing uses as of 1987, and the question is, can they rebuild?
This is a very different issue than a non-conforming structure, which is what you're looking at. This is a non-conforming use. Once a non-conforming use is gone, it cannot be reestablished. So we have met with Mr. Patel today, the owner of the hotel, and have advised him that the building that has been demolished as a result of the fire cannot be reestablished. He can rebuild the 17, we couldn't hear you.
Okay, all right.
He can repair the building that has the other 17 units in it.
Keep doing it.
The issue is, from a business standpoint, does that make sense?
All right, thanks.
Somebody, yes, okay. All right. Mr. Reddick?
Yes. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about the Midtown Tunnel, and I would just like to know, is it anybody in Norfolk, whether it's the manager's office, the attorney's office, the mayor's office, who actually knew anything about, you know, what was going on? But my question is, maybe two or three years ago, we had this great presentation about the Midtown Tunnel, and is this the same group who actually got the contract? Do you, you know, do you remember the presentation we had? We had a presentation, though.
We had a couple.
But this, the last one, not the very first one, but the very last one we had, they were, they were very ambitious as far as the plans were concerned in terms of easy pass and things of that nature. And so, and I thought that that particular group was a group that was going to get the contract. And, you know, there's just been so much talk about the Midtown Tunnel. I would just hate for us to be guilty by omission. I mean, you know, we know how important the project is to us in terms of getting people to the base, to medical center, and ODU, and I would just hate for us to know or knew what was coming out of the pipe and not really say anything, and then when the dust cleared, they say, well, you know, the man knew, or the attorney knew, or the manager knew. So I just want to know who knew what, when, if anything.
I'd be glad to respond to that, and I'll, you know, maybe have it the next council meeting, where we can go through. But I'll tell you that the City of Norfolk, we were never consulted about the terms of this deal. We were briefed on one occasion by the Commissioner of VDOT, I think in December, about what a deal might look like. We'd never saw any, we were never presented with an opportunity to respond to a contract. A few, couple of weeks before the document was actually signed, Secretary of Transportation met with me and the mayor of Portsmouth, and told us what was in the document. Did not show us the document, but didn't ask us what we thought, you know, whether we cared. The terms about, you know, inflation, about, you know, these clauses that talk about damages, the terms of the deal, I mean, the numbers, the actual details of the deal were never presented to us. The only thing we were focused on at one point was the $1.50, and then the thing became a whole different scenario. So I have said any number of times publicly, the City of Norfolk was not at the table, that we were never consulted, we were never asked what we thought. We were, a couple of weeks before the event, told what some of the details were. We were never allowed to see a piece of paper with anything written down, and then we were, we read in the paper like everybody else that the deal had been signed. But I'd be glad to go through chapter and verse with you next week.
Well, okay. The other thing is, as Mr. Winn mentioned, we probably all got emails about the property in Ocean View. If there is, first of all, I could care less whether Winn is running for reelection or not, in terms of trying to get the property. Somebody did mention that. There is, as far as I'm concerned, there should be no new money for this. If there's some revolving land acquisition fund that might come from that section of town, that's one thing, but I don't expect any new money to be found, developed, to buy this piece of property. And that's my position on that. Certainly, it's the entire council's desire, but as far as I'm concerned, somebody running for reelection is not enough reason for us to go out and try to buy a piece of property. Mr. Winn is always talking about being frugal, as a matter of fact, fighting a transfer station downtown, because he says that so many things need to be done. So I put that in the same category as anything else that needs to be done. If there's land acquisition for revolving fund, it's going to come from that part of town, that's one thing, but no new money for that hotel, from my standpoint.
Can I respond to that? This has nothing to do with running for office, Mr. Reddick. This is an opportunity that has fallen in our lap.
If there is money in your revolving fund, that's one thing. Now, my reference to the running for office, whoever sent the email said, well, you know, Bucky Winn is running for reelection. If that's the impetus from the outside is one thing, but I certainly hope that's not your motivation.
Our motivation is that a unique opportunity is presented.
A unique opportunity to put a transfer station downtown, but yet you're arguing about that.
Okay. All right, okay.
Dr. Whibley?
I just had a question on follow-up about this tunnel. I thought, when, because we had been briefed on it, we just hadn't been part of the, you know, the plans on, you know, weren't at the table to make any of the decisions. But what I understood was, and am I correct on this, because I don't think this is getting out, is that in the past, the Department of Transportation has paid for the maintenance of the tunnels, and now this tolling is going to now be the money to maintain that? Am I correct?
There's a whole series of conditions in this contract which impact the toll, and some of them, and some of which is the fact that over the past 50 years of the life of this tunnel, the state has paid to operate and maintain it.
Right. So I, you know, I really think that message also needs to get out, that people need to understand that they've changed the rules here, and that not only are we paying for the tunnel, but now we're also paying for the maintenance, which is not what we've done in the past.
Anyway. That is not the biggest number.
I know.
I mean, the biggest number is deferred maintenance, that, I mean, that should have been paid, that we've all been paying for for years, which has now been lumped into this, that the VDOT should have made several payments. We'll get you all of that stuff, but, you know, I want to go back to what Paul said at the beginning, this, and what I've said a couple of times out loud. This is a very important project to the city, I mean, to our economy. I mean, we can, you know, we can stamp our feet all we want, but the impact on the economy, the impact on people's lives, the impact on air quality, the impact on our ability to get out of here in case there's a hurricane, it's the most heavily traveled two-lane road in Virginia, maybe east of the Mississippi. It's vital to the port, it's vital to the military, who are our main economic drivers. I mean, there's lots of reasons to, you know, hold your nose and say, okay, and that's the way I feel, that's where I am on the Midtown Tunnel. But I'm glad to give you all of it.
Wouldn't it still benefit this council if we took maybe an approach of asking our legislators to find more money in the state budget to lower the cost of the tolls, as in buy down? Louise Lucas, Senator Lucas, you know, the Democrats in the Senate have been holding firm, and that's one of the reasons why, is because the $1.80, you know, price tag is higher than what they originally had told us, but if the city council did take a position and asked our delegates to support a budget amendment that would lower the cost of the toll, you know, and a lot of this, too, has to do with the Republicans not wanting to raise the gas tax, and if the gas tax was raised, it could probably pay for this whole construction project, and they just don't want to do it, but
That's not true either.
If we could ask them to lower the cost of the toll by putting more money in the budget, I think it would
The lower in the top, the cost of the toll, Tommy, doesn't lower the overall ability for them to increase over time.
Right. I understand that, yeah.
Part of what we're now hearing is that there's this increase that can occur after, I believe, year four on the toll, so they could, they could lower it initially, but unless there's something structured in there that gives some sort of allowance, if there is an increase that continues, you know, that continues to hold the price down for the general public, we're still going to be uprooted in 58 years.
If I, by the way, it's both Republicans and Democrats who have failed to raise taxes for transportation, say that, but one penny on the gas tax only gets you $50 million. You're not going to be able to raise the gas tax high enough to do what you need to do. Everybody says, well, let's just put three or four pennies on the gas tax. You need a whole array of new revenue sources in order to fix the transportation system and to give you some relief on these, and you also need tolls. I mean, there's a whole mix of stuff. I mean, three or four cents gets you a couple hundred, you know, $200 million. You know, Northern Virginia could eat that up in one interchange. I mean, so, anyway, but I
And just one other thing, maybe I've read somewhere that to lower the cost by a penny, it costs $10 million. Am I wrong?
I read that, too, but I'm not sure that's true.
But that's correct. But, see, mighty high.
Brian, Brian. Brian's got it right.
Up at the General Assembly, we've been using 50 cents equals 500 million to reduce about 50 cents to be a $500 million contract. But I also want to tell council that, I confirmed with VDOT, that there is a prepayment penalty with the ERC contract, so even if the state were to identify 500 million, it would be directly 500 million to reduce the total cost. And I also wanted to tell council, there was a $1 million grant provision that was passed by the Senate for college students, so that they could make application, and it'd be a means test based on financial ability to pay.
So did you say there was a prepayment penalty?
That's what I understand from the VDOT folks that I spoke with, within the ERC contract, that there would be a prepayment penalty for a dollar applied to subsidize the toll.
And the toll starts two years before the actual construction, correct?
I understand the toll is scheduled to start fall of this year.
Construction is scheduled to begin about the end of this year? And there's a reason for that, by the way. I mean, building this tunnel solely on the back of a toll is the worst, is the most difficult financial way, I mean, it is the toughest way to finance any construction, because you have all of your costs sunk into the tunnel before you start getting revenue back from the tolls, you know, which pays the capital and the debt service. So if you don't put it on there now, by the way, even before the new tunnel is built, you incur all that, you know, all of the rolled-up debt service at the end, so your tolls go higher. It's a, and not only that, the operational cost for running a toll system is very expensive. So it's, I mean, it's, and this isn't just us, by the way, I mean, this is a statewide problem. This is, this is, you know, they're quoted in the paper, this is the can the guy kicked down the road. Nobody's wanted to deal with any of this stuff since the early 80s, and so this is where we are, and this is the worst, this is the most congested, you know, intersecting tunnel, two-lane road in the Commonwealth. Nobody puts up with what we put up with, and so, but to think that we could have a tunnel without somebody paying for it, is not, is just, you know, somebody's got to pay for it, and the Commonwealth and the General Assembly have determined, you know, that we're going to pay for it with tolls.
I don't think anybody really is arguing the need for the tunnel, and it's not an opposition to the tunnel. I think what we're hearing more is all of the little details they get, you know, just dripped out one at a time, and it's almost like every time you turn around, there's something else, and there's something else, and there's something else, and everything that comes out costs money.
Right.
You know, so, anyway.
I agree. Okay. Angela, do you have anything else? Is that it?
Um, no. I can deal with my
All right, then we will begin again promptly at 5:00. Thanks.